Good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rural County City Grúia Independent School District Meeting to Order. It is Thursday, April 28, 2022. It is now 6:33 PM, and we are at the Rural County City High School Cafeteria. On that note, I want to thank Mr. Jorge Peña, Administration, and Staff for your hospitality. Thank you for hosting us so much. And let me go ahead and take a roll call for purposes of determining a quorum. Mr. Jay Peña.
Present.
Mr. Basilio D. Varela Jr.
Present.
Mr. Noe Castillo.
Present.
Mr. Johnny Pope IV.
Present.
Mr. Elizaví Velázquez Jr.
Present.
And myself, Eric Ramírez, present. Let the members reflect that there is a quorum to proceed. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Castillo, will you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and for the Republic of Quixote stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Section three, Approval of Minutes. That would include the Special Board Meeting held on March 21, 2022, the public hearing of March 29, 2022, and the regular board meeting of March 29, 2022. Is there a meeting right this...
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Special Board Meeting on March 21, public hearing on March 29, and regular board meeting of March 29 of the year 2022.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, Public Forum. Did anybody sign up for Public Forum? Thank you. Section five, Recognitions. The first one I have is Transportation Department.
Good evening, Mr. President, distinguished members of our board, Mr. Superintendent, and everybody here in attendance at Rio High. At this moment, we're going to go ahead and recognize some of our transportation staff that are here today, and of course, recognize them all in their entirety. But I know that... Mr. Peña, you wanted to say a few words.
Yes, good evening, everyone. At this time, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, we would like to recognize the tremendous work that our transportation has done throughout the school year. They've been helping, you know, throughout immensely throughout this year. That's been very challenging, you know, after the pandemic. But even during the pandemic, they even helped go and deliver meals that were provided by cafeteria. So they've been working with us day in and day out. So today, tonight, we want to recognize them and thank them for the sensational job that they do every single day. It does not go unnoticed, and we are blessed to have them here with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. The Transportation Department is made up of several sub-levels, some of which we have are our bus drivers, we have our bus aides, our motor pool staff, which consists of our mechanics, tire technicians, oil and lube technicians, parts men, supervisors, and of course, the office staff. Our director is Mr. Juan García, and there's 105 total in the Transportation Department with us today. And of course, we couldn't get them all here today because right now, they're doing tutorials, they're doing ACEs, they're on trips. So of course, a lot of our, if not the majority of our Transportation Department could not be here, but they are represented by their director, Mr. Juan García, and Mr. Sergio Rodríguez. Could you all come up here just so we can take a picture with our board members?
Please.
I know how much they wanted. They're really, really shy, but still, you know, let's give them the recognition that they deserve. So round of applause, yes. With us today, we have Sergio Rodríguez, Juan Guerra, José Sáenz, Álvaro Iglesias, Juan Ángel García, and María Uribe. You could come onstage so we can get a picture with our board members. It's very important to note, ladies and gentlemen, while they'll get the pictures set up, most of the time, our transportation, our bus drivers are the first persons that our students see in the morning, guys. Really, really early in the morning. Sometimes at 5 o'clock in the morning, they're up on routes picking up students. So, and usually, they're the last person that they see at the end after practices, after band practice, sports. Find a window, as they say. Smiles, sonrisas, estamos celebrándonos. Smile. Thank you very much. Once again, another round of applause for the Transportation Department that is here tonight. Muchas gracias. We also have for each member of our Transportation Department a wonderful lunch bag with a nice design that has been given also to our Transportation and our Maintenance Department. And each member of the Transportation Department will be given a certificate and this awesome lunch bag.
I just, on the Transportation Department, just want to thank you all. You're off before the sun rises, and you're getting home after the sun sets. Long hours, but thank you for transporting and taking care of our kids. Thank you for taking our kids during rough times we had a couple of years ago, and couldn't appreciate you, couldn't give you enough thanks. But on behalf of myself, thank you for all that you do.
I'll just add, I mean, that sums it up. Thank you all so much. I don't think we could have put it any better. But also, thank you all for being very well aware. I, you see me on the roads when I'm in my golf cart. You are the best drivers ever. And thank you for watching out for me as well.
Mr. Castillo.
I want to thank you all for carrying our children. You know, that's gold every day in the mornings and the evenings, and you guys take them out of town and to all the trips and everybody that's involved in it. I thank all the staff and employees of the district that do wonders with our children, and thank you for what you do. God bless you all.
Mr. Pope.
Thank you for everything. I mean, you all don't even understand how extremely important you are to the district, and we appreciate you, and your efforts don't go unnoticed.
Mr. Velázquez.
Thank you all. What can I say? You bring the most precious things that we have. Thank you for... We had maybe one accident, but it wasn't our fault, right, Mr. Peña?
Correct.
Thank you for the safe driving. Thank you for the safe driving, and God bless you all.
Mr. García, can I just ask, how many miles do we travel in a school year? Almost...
1.3.
From here to the moon, then, more or less, right? Thank you.
I think, I think there's a lot that has already been said that I was going to say, so I won't repeat it. But I kept thinking of the word that I can use to describe both the transportation and the child nutrition program, and the only thing I could think of was lifeline. You know, these are lifelines to what gets us to the school district. Without you, without the child nutrition program, you know, we don't get here. So there's so many of you, 105. I can imagine what it is to organize it, you know, from a practical point of view, and then everything you do, you're driving at all hours of the night, and I'm sure it isn't easy, and sometimes, you know, I know it's not the driving late at night, and having maybe sometimes to, you know, put up with unruly behavior and that kind of thing on the buses, but you all do it with so much professionalism, so much passion. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for everything you do, and I wish all 105 were here, but I know it's impossible. Please relay to them the sentiments that were said tonight, because they do matter that much to us. Thank you so very much again for being here tonight. Thank you.
The next one is the Child Nutrition Program. Mr. Sosa.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Under the direction of our director, Ms. Patsy Ramírez, we're going to be recognizing our cafeteria staff, and we're going to go by campuses. So we're going to begin with Real Grande City High School, and they are under the direction of the cafeteria manager, Ms. Ana Barrera. Sonrisas, sonrisas. Thank you very much to Real Grande City High School. Our cafeteria staff will also be receiving those lunch bags with their personalized logo on it. Up next, while Real Grande City High School is exiting the stage, we have Grúia High School under the direction of Carla Salinas, the cafeteria... Carla Solís. Just making sure if they were awake, Carla. Let's get some bigger smiles, Grúia. Eso. Another round of applause for Grúia High School. Up next, we have cafeteria staff that actually encompasses three different campuses. In the same cafeteria, they are serving Early College, Ringold Middle School, and Magnet Middle School, and they are under the direction of Ms. Berta Vela, our cafeteria manager. Smile. There we go, cheese. Let's hear it once again for our cafeteria staff from Early College, Ringold Middle School, and Magnet Middle School. Coming up next, we have the cafeteria staff from Grúia Middle School under the direction of manager Carla Garza. Let's hear it once again for Grúia Middle School. Coming up next, ladies and gentlemen, we have the cafeteria staff from Veterans Middle School. And they are under the direction of manager Ilda Medina. I like it. He likes the spotlight, ladies and gentlemen, he wants to be them. Muchas gracias, Mr. Rendon. Cheese. Ladies and gentlemen, before you all leave, anybody who's departing, we do have refreshments. We have cake and beverages in the back. Before you all leave, there are some refreshments for our Transportation Department and our cafeteria staff. Let's hear it once again for Veterans Middle School. Coming up next, we have Grúia Elementary, and they are under the direction of manager Martha Peña. Llegó Margarita. Let's hear it once again for Grúia Elementary. Coming up next on stage, we have La Unión Elementary under the direction of Jeremy Seal, cafeteria manager. Another round of applause for La Unión Elementary. Coming up next, ladies and gentlemen, we have Albert and Celia Barrera Elementary, and they are under the direction of Ms. Alma Rosa, cafeteria manager. Another round of applause for Albert and Celia Barrera Elementary. Up next on the stage, we have John and Aleb Inojosa Elementary. They are under the direction of Mrs. Veronica Luceros, cafeteria manager. Let's hear it once again for John and Aleb Inojosa Elementary. Coming up next on stage, we have another staff that handles two campuses. They've got Ringold and Magnet Elementary, and they are under the direction of Noelia López, cafeteria manager. And they are under the direction of Noelia Lopez, cafeteria manager. Let's hear it once again for Ringold and Magnet Elementary staff, ladies and gentlemen. On their way up to the stage, we have the staff, cafeteria staff, from Roque Guerra Elementary. And they are under the direction of Matilde Lazo, cafeteria manager. Another round of applause for Roque Guerra Elementary. Coming up next to the stage, we have the cafeteria staff from Alto Bonito Elementary. And we have our manager, Angelica Salinas. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, please don't leave to our transportation and cafeteria staff. We do have refreshments and we do have cake in the back. If you have not gotten yours, please go pick up your plate of cake and your refreshments. Thank you once again to Alto Bonito Elementary. Up next on the stage, we have General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, under the direction of Armenia Contreras, cafeteria manager. Thank you once again to General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. And now, ladies and gentlemen, last but certainly not least, we have our cafeteria staff from Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary. And they are under the direction of Ms. Armandina Stuniga, cafeteria manager. Thank you very much to Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary. And of course, ladies and gentlemen, we would be remiss if we did not mention all of the wonderful staff that Ms. Ramírez has working at our central office. So thank you to everybody who puts all of this together. Thank you, Ms. Ramírez, of course, for your wonderful staff, under your wonderful direction. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to our office staff.
The meeting must go on.
Yes, right? They can continue going.
Please continue to enjoy the refreshments, but we will continue with the board meeting. I'm not sure if some of the board members want to say a little thank you to the child nutrition program. Mr. Ariel?
I just would like to say to all the cafeteria people, thank you for taking care of our kids. Thank you for feeding our kids. I know sometimes it's early in the morning, at lunchtime, and in many cases, in the supper time. But some of the kids, believe it or not, maybe those are the only meals they have all day long. So on behalf, I think of myself, thank you for everything you do for every single child. Like, I still remember, I graduated in 1974, but I still remember the enchiladas, the upside-down pineapple cake. It was tremendous and we still look for them. Great job, guys.
Mr. Peña?
I think that Macho hit the nail on the head when he said that this, a lot of times, this is the place where most children eat. And I know that prayer says, "God bless the hands that prepare the meals," and that's definitely you guys. Thank y'all so much for what y'all do.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes, I want to thank you all for doing what you do behind the scenes. I know that we're up front here all the time and everybody gets to know who we are. And you guys, we see you once in a while and don't appreciate what you all do. And that's for all the staff. I know all the teachers, administrators, everyone, Mr. Peña. You know, everything you guys do does not go unnoticed. And it's a big machine that works all together, so nobody can do anything alone. It's all as a group. So thank you all, and again, God bless you for everything you do in taking care of our kids.
Mr. Pope?
Just want to say God bless you all for taking care of the children, for feeding the children. And I'm still trying to find out where that French toast breakfast, the sticks, come from, because I love them. I love the French toast. I love the pizza. But thank you for everything.
Mr. Velazquez?
Thank you for keeping our kids healthy. Thank you very much. God bless. Muchísimas gracias y Dios los bendiga.
Mr. Peña?
Thank you. Muchísimas gracias a los dos departamentos. Sin ustedes no podemos correr las escuelas. Son mil gracias por todo lo que hacen, desde antes que salga el sol a que se meta el sol. Gracias por preparar todo. Y también durante la pandemia estuvieron aquí con nosotros paso a paso. Era un temporal muy peligroso, ¿verdad?, pero ustedes no dejaron su trabajo. Son mil gracias por todos esos tiempos y los tiempos de hoy que son muy difíciles, ¿verdad?, para todos. Pero gracias por tener tanta atención a nuestros hijos todo el día, fin de semana, todos los días. Gracias, mil gracias. Que los los bendiga y que sigan teniendo mucha vida y mucho esfuerzo y mucho empeño y a que dale adelante. Gracias.
I don't know why I let everybody go before me. They take all the good stuff that everybody was, I was thinking of saying. But a while ago, we were talking about the transportation department, and we asked how many number there were. It was 105. And then I asked Mr. Peña, "How many in the child nutrition program?" I was told 140. Is that about right? 140? So can you imagine that? And the one thing I noticed, when they're coming and getting their certificates in their bag, is such amount of pride that you all have in what you do. And that's what's lost in a lot of today's world. And I see it. I love it. It's forefront for everybody to see. And it's real easy for a picture to go up on social media or something and you get filled in controversy. You know what, I'm, just keep doing what you're doing because your heart obviously is in the right place. It shows, it reflects in how you smile and how you treat each other and the passion you have for what you do and the fact that you showed up here tonight, on a Thursday night, just to come and allow us to say thank you. And that goes a long way, and I think everybody needs to know just how important that is. Thank you for what you do. Keep up the great work. Again, from the bottom of my heart, from all of us, thank you so much.
Mr. Ramírez, tomorrow we will be honoring them with a luncheon.
That's true.
So no se los olvide mañana, vamos a tener la comida para ustedes. In your honor, so please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. I will proceed to section six, reports and information. Item number one, report on National Library Week celebrations. I have Ms. Nidia Benitez presenting.
Good evening, board president, members of the board, Mr. Peña, ladies and gentlemen. It is with great pride that I come before you to recognize our librarians. I guess, let me introduce myself first. My name is Nidia Menetes and I'm the director for the Library and Media Services. And we celebrated National Library Week on April the 4th, which is already a few weeks behind, but it's okay. Our librarians are patient. They are wonderful, and I want to recognize them for their hard work. It is these ladies that keep our students reading. They keep them interested in books, in new books, in innovative ways. They are always looking for new softwares and technologies. They make sure that every student has a device, a working device in their hands, and every teacher has a working device in their hands. So I want to call them and give them a little certificate, and if you can help me with that?
Yes, of course.
So at this time, if you're present, Marisa Aguirre, please come forward. Marisa Aguirre is our, she's a teacher, but she's taking the place of a librarian at General Sanchez Elementary. Thank you, Marisa. Thank you for doing the work of a librarian. Thank you. We have Jeanie Anderson. Jeanie Anderson is a librarian at Ringold Middle School, Ace Middle School, and Preparatory for Early College. We have Marbella Barrera from Roque Guerra Junior Elementary. Cynthia Garcia from Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary. Nancy Garcia from Veterans Middle School. Sandra Guerrero from Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary. Delma Guerrero from Rio Grande City High School. Ana, Lara Alvidre from La Unión. Patricia Montes from Alto Bonito Elementary. Rosario Osuna from Gruya Middle School. Amberina Pérez from John and Olive Inojosa Elementary. Erika Salinas from the Academy for Academic Enhancement Elementary. Jeanette Solis from Ringold Elementary. Armandina Villarreal from Gruya High School. And Jeanette Sarate from Gruya Elementary. Ladies, thank you for the great job you do. Thank you. From the bottom of my heart.
Item number two is a report on local, remote, and virtual academy teachers. I have Ms. San Juanita Garcia presenting.
Good afternoon, board president, Ms. Edith Ramírez, members of the board, superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña, staff, community members present. I'm Ms. San Juanita Olivares, and I'm here to recognize some amazing and I'm here to recognize some amazing teachers that worked throughout the year with remote conferencing. I know this year, although it seemed like we returned back to normalcy, the COVID-19 pandemic continued to challenge all of us in the school system, from administrators to teachers to students and their families. When the state allowed the opportunity to provide remote conferencing in late August, our RGC GISD employees quickly stepped up and united efforts to provide up to 20 days of virtual instruction support for qualifying students. Principals worked with us, and 37 teachers across our district accommodated their schedules to provide two hours for the elementary students and four hours for the secondary students. A total of 3,100 students participated in this program throughout the school year. Some students received a couple of days of virtual instruction, while others needed all 20 days. In addition to the remote conferencing, in mid-October, the Senate Bill 15 allowed us to provide virtual instruction for all year for qualifying students. RGC GISD decided to make this available to students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And although, and this was throughout the year, and we serviced up to 20 years, 20 students at one point. I guess we can say that the silver lining in this challenging time has been that it has brought us together to work with our students and families in ways that we never thought it would be possible. So today, we are here to recognize these teachers for their continued support to our RGC GISD. As I call your name, if you can please come forward, I know that not everybody's here, so I am going to go ahead and announce all of them. We have Antonio Cantú from the Disciplinary Alternative Education Program. Marisol Flores from La Unión Elementary. She was one of our virtual teachers. Antonio Cantú was a remote conferencing. Ms. Sylvia Garcia from La Unión Elementary. Amanda Garza from Rio High School. Oscar Osuna from Gruya High School. Erica Salinas from Rio Grande City High School. Valeria Salinas from Ringel Middle School. Valeria from John and Olive, I'm sorry, John and Olive Inojosa. Jessica Chávez Uribe from Ringel Middle School. Carolina Garcia from Veterans Middle School. Orlando Guerra from Gruya High School. I think the rest. Imelda Guerra from Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary. Pablo Martínez from Gruya Middle School. Mr. Harmon Odom from Gruya Elementary. Ms. Jessica Sines from Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary. Julissa Salinas from Ringel Elementary. Ana López from Rio Grande City High School. Itzayana Vallejo from Veterans Middle School. Mr. Leroy Contreras from Gruya High School. Yunes Solis from Gruya High School. Gina Flores from Rio Grande City High School. Martin Jiménez from Gruya High School. Joyce Canyamar from Rio Grande City High School. Hector Garza from Gruya High School. Mr. Francisco Contreras from Rio Grande City High School. Mr. Manuel Mercado, Gruya High School. Mr. Emirito Veloso from the Alternative Center. Gustavo Valenciana from Rio Grande City High School. Daniel Garza from the Alternative Center. Consuelo Ortiz from Alto Bonito Elementary. Claudia Peña from Alternative Center. Ms. Alma Peralles from Gruya High School. Victoria Guerra from Gruya Middle School. Perla Ramirez from Gruya High School. Mr. Daniel Vázquez from the Alternative Center. Ms. Aisa Basán from Gruya High School. Ms. Veronica Robles from Gruya High School. And Mr. Alvidre from La Unión Elementary. Again, all these teachers worked together, and they provided instructional support to all the students. We, like I said, it was 3,100 students that benefited from this program, and I'm very, very proud of all their work. I know that they had to do what other teachers, you know, didn't have to. So that went a long way. Thank you so much. We also want to recognize Mr. Rolando Barrera. I think he's here. He's here. Mr. Barrera was very instrumental, helping us making sure that all the students qualified and were getting the support that they needed. And since I have my two staff, and it is Administrative Professionals Day, I do want to recognize Ms. Aisa Inojosa and Ms. Mariela Peña because they are here and they're always helping us out. They were instrumental in this whole program. So thank you very much.
When we have to move the cameraman more back, that's a good problem to have. That means it's a big group, big group of being recognized.
Item number three, Report on 2021 through 2024 ARP Homeless II Federal Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Marco Olivares, Director of Other Special Populations. Over the years, the definition of homelessness has evolved to what we have today. So the McKinney-Vento definition of homelessness defines homelessness as follows. The term homeless children and youths means individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. This includes children and youths who are sharing the housing of other persons due to the housing economic hardship or a similar reason, are living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or camping grounds due to the lack of alternative adequate accommodations, are living in emergency or transitional shelters, or abandoned hospitals. Children and youths who have a primary nighttime residence, that is a public or private place not designed for or ordinarily used as a regular sleeping accommodation for human beings. Children and youths who are living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, bus or train stations, or similar settings. Migratory children who qualify as homeless for the purpose of this subtitle because of children are living in circumstances described in Clause 1 through 3. Next slide. So the Department of Other Special Populations under the federal and state's program division identifies these students with the helps of the school district. Once a student is identified, we use a social services form to immediately provide clothing with the help of our school-wide liaison and the help from the campus themselves. We assist with correlating with the precinct contact number for the food pantry. We assist in coordinating housing if available in certain precincts, immediate enrollment, removal of barriers to school enrollment, school selection, transportation assistance with school buses in and out of the district, immediate eligibility for free child nutrition, and we work closely with our school-wide liaison and the Director of Parental Engagement. The numbers for the 2020-2021 District McKinney-Vento total was 30 at the end of the year that were identified through our program. And right now, we currently have 53 for this year that have been identified. And these numbers do fluctuate throughout the year. But like I said, with the help of transportation, our school-wide liaison, Director of Parental Engagement, we are able to facilitate these programs at this time. Now we'll have our Executive Director of Federal and State Programs, Ms. González, to report on the ARP Homeless II Federal Grant that will help us expand these services.
Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña. We qualified for additional funds through ARP, the American Rescue Plan, specifically for the homeless in our community. We actually received $109,893 in addition to the 10% that we set aside under Title I Part 8. So this grant is to last us three years. So we're going to divide that into three parts for the next three years and continue to service the children with school supplies, clothing, travel, whatever they need as they are identified in the next three years. So very happy about this additional money to the district.
It's a great cause. Thank you.
Director González, just a comment if I could.
Yes.
On that one, for community outreach, you got a lot of local businesses that might also be willing to contribute if they're aware.
Yes, we've partnered with the Parental Involvement Director who's organizing that alongside with Mr. Olivares. And we have quite a bit of organizations that are willing to help us with additional services. So it's going very well with the addition of this particular OSP department under Mr. Olivares. He has identified so many children that normally we don't assume that they are technically homeless. But because here, our community, you know, we say, we're going to live with my parents for a while until we get back on our feet. That's technically homeless. And so children qualify for services that normally we probably would have never done in the past. And he's done an excellent job in identifying students across the district. So we're very happy.
Thank you all so much.
I'm sorry, how many homeless kids do we have?
Right now, we have 53 identified.
Fifty-three.
But that's not to say there's more out there. And so we do correspond with the parents. We send them notices if anybody is struggling with, if a child doesn't have their own bed, technically, they're homeless. If a child doesn't, is doubling up with someone, a grandparent, a sister, whatever, they're homeless. And but we don't, in our community or the way we are, we don't consider it because we go live with our grandparents or we go live, and we think that's normal. But the U.S. has identified these kids as actually being homeless at not having their own bed to sleep in every night. So we're going to try to identify more. That's our goal.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from Ms. González, from Mr. Olivares? Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Item number four, Report from RGC GISD Health Services Department. Mr. Rolando Barrera.
Good evening, Board President Ramirez, members of the board, Superintendent Peña, staff, and community members. I want to give you a little quick update on our Health Services Department. I don't know if you've noticed, a lot of testing sites around our community have closed. Even we had one that was a partnership with Curative, unfortunately closed down. The federal funds that were being used to help out the community members unfortunately ran out. I am fortunate to say that in our district, we still have many tests that we can utilize for any staff member, students, or any district personnel that we have. We continue to offer these services for our students and staff whenever we need it, okay? And we continue to try to find resources for our community as soon as we can. We are still seeing very, very minimal COVID numbers in our community, which is low spread, especially in our schools. You know, we are moving on and trying to get past this, and we are looking in a good direction, especially for, as the days go on. Just wanted to give you a little update on that.
So if somebody wanted a COVID test, or how would they go, a teacher, a cook, how do they go about getting one?
So our staff members can get tested at the campuses where they're at. And if they're, for example, at central offices, they could go to my offices as well. So our COVID tests are for all staff members and students. All the nurses' offices as well are COVID test equipped. And once again, we are ready to test anybody that would need to get tested or would like to get tested.
So basically, we can test people at their individual campuses or at their, let's say, at the transportation or food services?
Yes, they go to our central office, and we help them out there. Yes. And we're here to help as much as we can.
What does that star represent, sir?
The Cowboys, sir.
Okay.
Draft date.
Not even football season.
All right. Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Barrera?
I just, I always say one thing. I call you Superman. You've done a fantastic job the last two years with COVID. You're bigger than the Cowboys, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Thank you. Item five, Update on Students/Staff Highlights. I have Ms. Osuna presenting.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, members of the board. As is customary, every month, we have a video presentation of the highlights that we had for the month. This month, we're going to be showing the month of March.
March was a sensational month for our students and staff. Region 1 recognized John and Olive Inojosa Elementary as one of only two national distinguished schools in Texas. Our Counseling Department visited the Crime Victim Center to learn about warning signs and emergency contacts. Our schools and students celebrated Read Across America Week in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday by wearing silly socks and other fun activities organized by our sensational librarians. Rio Grande City Gruya ISD hosted the annual AP Recognition Banquet to honor our students who have earned the title of AP Scholar, AP Scholar with Honor, and AP Scholar with Distinction. Our sensational superintendent, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., hosted a breakfast for our Gator and Rattler student athletes to celebrate the accomplishments of each of our school teams. Our Maintenance Department was recognized at the last regular board meeting for all of the hard work and dedication they pour into our district. We continued with the superintendent math challenges at our elementary schools. Our students have responded really well to these challenges, and we have seen improvement in our math scores. Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr. surprised our star Academy High School students with a special treat for all the hard work our students have put into their studies. The Department for Early Childhood visited General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary to read to our students and help with a compare and contrast lesson. The Special Services Department hosted a luncheon for our sensational educational diagnosticians, along with a special treat from our Superintendent of Schools. The Rio Grande City Police Department spoke to our students about the health and legal consequences of underage drinking. RGC GISD celebrated Texas Public School Week by hosting open houses at all of our schools. The Department of Early Childhood recognized the top three pre-K teaching in our district with the most learning and family outcome opportunities. with the most learning and family outcome opportunities in the Ready Rosie Program. At Rural Grand City Gruya ISD, we strive to give you our...
Before we wrap up the reports and information, I have been given a list of supporting accomplishments or acknowledgements that must be made. We have Gruya in Rio, boys and girls soccer, several all-district selections. We have real high school coach, Eddie Garcia, Coach of the Year for 35A. We have real boys and girls golf, individual regional qualifiers, Steven Perez and Vanessa Garza. Real boys and girls track and field, several district champs, area champs, and regional qualifiers. Regionals are April 29th and the 30th in San Antonio. We have Serena Ramirez, top five in state in discus. Gruya Boys and Girls Track and Field, also several district area champs, regional qualifiers. Regionals are same dates, April 29th and 30th in Kingsville. Real Softballs, 35A, 35A co-district champs. They play versus Carroll tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. in Rio. Gruya Baseball is playoff-bound. They have a seeding game tomorrow versus Raymondville at 7:00 p.m. at Gruya. And real baseball is playing for your playoff berth tomorrow versus Laredo Martin at Zapata at 7:00 p.m. So we wish them all the best success and wish them well the next few games and rounds and playoff births, all of it included, so wish them the best. Section seven, recommending approving the consent agenda. The Board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. We have item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rural Grand City Gruya ISD. Do we have motion or any discussion on item number one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agendas presented in our board package, which be item one, item two, and item three.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to approve items one through three. Is there a second to that motion? That's the second by Mr. Pope. Is there any discussion required? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number four is consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Wings on Fire Ministries for United Prayer Night on Saturday, June 4th, 2022, at the Joe R. Sanchez Stadium. Before I ask for a motion, it's my understanding that there has not been a liability coverage that are submitted to the district. I'm sure that's something that must be discussed, but on that note, do we have further discussion on that, or do I have a motion on item four pending the liability coverage insurance?
Well, let me do this. I move that we approve item four, item five, item six, and item seven as presented in our board package with the idea that, or not the idea, with the caveat that an item four, a liability insurance has to be presented before it's granted.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on pay request from Design Group International for Statement Number Two on Band Annex Re Roof and Roof Structure Repair. Do we have a motion on item eight?
Mr. President, I move we approve item eight, nine, and ten as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to approve items eight and nine. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Eight and nine?
And ten.
And ten. Actually, we have some discussion on item ten, Mr. Barrera, so if you can, if you want to limit it to item eight and nine?
Okay. Let me amend my motion to approve item eight and nine as presented in our board package.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on either item? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item ten is consider and take possible action on reimbursable expenses for the Warren Group Architects for Performing Arts Center. However, it's come to my attention that there's some expenses that are being listed that must be revised by legal counsel before we approve. Is that correct, Ms. Gonzalez?
Shall we table a motion?
My idea was to motion to table the item, yes.
That's correct. I'd like to have a little bit of time to speak with him and make sure that there was a couple of red flags that I didn't like in there, so we can bring it for the next meeting.
I move that we table item ten.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to table item ten. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on proposal from Five Oaks Kitchen Design for New Gruya Middle School Cafeteria.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eleven and twelve as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to approve items eleven and twelve. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on requisitions, $5,000 and over. Is there a motion or any discussion on item thirteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirteen as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on item thirteen?
There's no addendum to it.
Is there any addendum to item thirteen? I have Ms. Robles. No? No addendum? Any further discussion required on item thirteen?
Yeah, I just want to know everything within budget. Ms. Robles? Yes? Okay.
Any other discussion? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bid, that's number twenty-two dash thirty-three, RGCGISD Faculty and Student Training Center. I think before we take any motion, Mr. Peña, do you want to discuss the issue with the add-on?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Administration is recommending that we go ahead and go with a low bid. I'm not sure if Ms. Robles or Mr. Garza would like to elaborate, but on the bid itself, it had different addendums, and we would like, administration would recommend that, you know, you give us the opportunity to try to work with the lowest bid and see if they'll negotiate, you know, a lower price or some of the addendum items.
My understanding is the bid is for X amount, and then there's different optional add-ons that can be added, but you want to be given the authorization to be able to negotiate those if needed.
That is correct.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we approve twenty-two dash thirty-three, and according to Mr. Peña, is the lowest bid? And we also, basically, on the same motion that you entertain, the idea of maybe talking to them about the addendums, but no action until you bring it back to us for approval.
That's a perfect motion. Okay, is there, there's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion?
Is that an amended motion?
No, that's an amended motion.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any further discussion required on item fourteen? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Just real quickly, Mr. President, so people know when we say Faculty and Student Training Center, that would be the old multipurpose center, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Barrera. Yes. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on RGCGISD 2021 through 2022 Summer Work Schedule. Is there any motion or discussion on item fifteen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item fifteen and sixteen as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required on either item? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on RGCGISD 2022 through 2023 TEP Guidelines. Is there a motion or any discussion on item seventeen?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item seventeen and eighteen as presented in our board package with a little bit of discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. You may proceed with the discussion, Mr. Barrera.
Why are we approving a bell schedule, could I ask?
Mr. Board President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Peña, the reason we submitted the bell schedule for approval, Mr. Barrera, is this year's instructional calendar was driven on additional minutes, so we want, for the record, we want to, we increased over five minutes per day. So that's part of the instructional calendar that was approved last board meeting. So this board meeting, we want to come back with instructional schedule and make sure we have on the record that we increased five minutes per day, which is submitted to the agency at the end of the year for funding.
So we have to submit this, the calendar, I mean, the bell schedule to the...
It'll be the total minutes per day that the district provides for children for middle school, high school, and elementary school.
And it's five minutes per day, or?
That we increased from last year, correct.
So basically, we're, at the end of a month, that means about an hour for every child more or less, give or take?
Yes, sir. Sounds right.
Okay.
Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, I mean, there was a motion by Mr. Barrera, there was a second by Mr. Castillo, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salinas. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on Memorandum of Understanding MOU between UTRGV and RGCGISD for LSSP practicum.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item nineteen and twenty as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to approve items nineteen and twenty. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on Region One Local Assessment Fee for Special Service Projects Commitment Form for the 2021-2022 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-one with a little bit of discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Mr. Barrera, you may proceed with discussion.
What is, what is that, sir? What is the special fee or?
I have Mrs. Morris presenting.
I guess what is the special fee, how much is?
If I put you on the spot, I just, I was giving your name.
No, no problem. What that is, it's the support that they provide to Mr. Peña and to Dr. Salinas and myself, in case we have any questions with Region One, we're able to reach out, and they provide these services for us. So it's basically more of the cabinet administrative, not so much the instructional component, but the operations, and we go through this every single year. So it's just the support that they provide to us as Assistant Superintendents and Superintendents if we have a question or concern.
Is there a fee?
Yes. The yearly fee, I think, did I attach it? Yes, it's on the next page, hold on. It's fifteen, it's based on our ADA, and so the fee is $15,888.
We've always had it?
Yes, it's a yearly fee. It's a, and it changes because it's based on our refined ADA. So it's based on the refined ADA from 2020 to 2021, which is the previous year, so it was based on $9,400. So the fee will probably be lower next year because our refined ADA will go down. So it fluctuates depending on the enrollment.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? There was a motion by Mr. Barrera, there was a second by Mr. Peña. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Morris. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action on Device Collections Checkout Policy and Guidelines.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to approve items twenty-two through twenty-five. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required on any particular item? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-six, consider and take possible action on renewal of the Power School PD Core Plus Certified License for the 2022-2023 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine as presented in our board package.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera to approve items twenty-six through twenty-nine. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirty, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase the Aptige powering your school's identity program. Is there motion or any discussion on item thirty?
Yeah, Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty with a little bit of discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Barrera. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Mr. Peña. You may proceed with discussion, Mr. Barrera. I have Mr. Science presenting.
What is this, could I ask?
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, Members of the Board, Mr. Peña, and Members of the audience. What we're doing with this program called Aptige, we are consolidating several programs into a program that we can, to software program that we can control through an app on the phone. We have the School Messenger, which is the one that calls out an attendance when somebody's absent, they call out students that, to the parents. This program can do it. We have our website, which I've heard from some people that it might be a little eyesore per se. This is also going to be a new website design, more edgy, more newer, a little more information. And it's so easy that if you know how to use Word or PowerPoint or Publisher, like insert a graphic, insert a text, it's that easy to create your webpage. And you can use that, you can do that through your phone, through an app. It's iPhone, Android. We actually have our representative, can you put, Eric, can you put them online? We actually have the rep from Aptige online, just in case there were some questions that you may have that I can't answer. But again, we're consolidating our website, we're consolidating our School Messenger into one for a little less than what we're paying both of them. And we have the beauty of using an app now. So anywhere that you're at, you can use the app to, if you want to send a message to the students. Example, real high school principal wants to send a message to the kids, you can do it off of the app.
So we'll be paying less money for this program than we pay for...
A little less, yes, sir. So we're consolidating into one, instead of having two, three different programs, we're consolidating into one, which is Aptige. That's Erin right there. She's our representative from Aptige. One of the districts, there's three districts that are doing it here in the valley. One is Mercedes and at Couch Elsa, and there's another district here that's currently using it, and we like the product, and we're hoping that you agree to it.
Ma'am, can you hear us? Can you hear us? If you had to summarize what your program is all about in three or four sentences, how would you say that? Or how would you describe it?
And I apologize, it's kind of hard to hear. Did you ask me to say something?
Yeah. In three or four sentences, how are you gonna, how can you summarize what the program is and how it benefits, I guess, teachers and students?
Gotcha, okay. So I'll try to keep this super brief. Basically, it's what Mr. Science was saying. It's the website, right, the messaging system with the added functionality of the app. Pretty much what we're trying to do is take all of these things and make it user-friendly to get the information out across all of these platforms, and also more user-friendly for parents, and now in the palm of their hand, right? So they'll be able to access it quick and easy and on their phone, and we'll also have that consistent information on the website to promote to potential students and teachers.
Could, so basically, would parents have access to that app? Yes?
Yes, parents would have access to the app, and then even like administrators, right, could send the information out from their phone, like in the case of an emergency as well.
So, Mr. Science, let me ask you a question. So let's say we have kids that are absent all over the district. It's possible to send them a message to all these parents that their kids are not showing up?
Yes, sir, by campus.
Okay.
By campus.
Are we doing that right now presently?
We are. Then again, it's, the system is a little outdated. We're going to be syncing into the Power School system, and we're going to get the latest and greatest from them as far as student uploads, student phone numbers. And sometimes if they do make calls, some of the calls don't get answered, it will show us who answers, who doesn't answer, if it went to a machine and stuff like that.
So in the app, does it have the capacity to make, send text messages or only phone messages?
Uh, no, I actually have, I can tell you what this product is about in two sentences. Thrill Share Mobile App allows schools to automatically update their website through a iPhone app or Android app, including Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, send push notifications, text messages, emails, and voice calls through a single entry on the app.
Ms. Young, I just have a few questions on this one. I'm sorry. I just have a few questions on this one. So really, you're just consolidating communications as one focal point of communication to distribute information, but what if the school has multiple Facebook pages, for example? Different departments, different campuses?
Yeah, so with that, it'll actually broken up by school. So it's like a really good question. So it's like a really good question. So from the admin leadership level, they'll be able to send the information out to all of the different Facebooks, all the different sections of the website, and all of those lists from one spot. And then for like the campus or school-specific people, right, we can have it to wherever they log in. They're just seeing their school-specific information.
Right, and the reason, I think, the timing of this might, might, we might be there is because I know that we've already rebranded as, and I know that we've got, for example, our domain names and whatnot still have, for example, our old school name. So I know we're getting to that point where we're going to have to update everything. So I can see where this came down the pipe. But...
We're actually not doing this to it over till the summer. We're going to let it go as it is right now. While Aptige is updating everything, they're going to get our old websites, get the stuff from there right now. And then during the summer, we're going to update everything.
That's what I was thinking. If the Board did approve something like this, it would have to be something that would be implemented in the summer.
Yes, well, we'll be transitioning over the summer.
And you're going to kick out the domain names? Like you're going to switch them or...?
Uh, we actually have two choices right now that belong to the school district. One is myrgccisd.org, and the other one is rgcgisd.net. Those are two domains that we can, if you want to stay with the old rgccisd.org, we can do that. Or we can switch over to myrgccisd.org, my, kind of like UTRGV, or rgcgisd.net. We own those two domains.
Okay. And you've collaborated with Mr. Osuna. I know that a lot of information gets pushed through your department. You've had a chance to look at it as well. This is something that... Multiple departments would be able to use it.
Any further questions, discussions for Mr. Science or Mrs. Young?
Just want to point out there's an annual fee to it.
Is there?
Yeah.
What's the annual fee?
Yeah, but it's, you're telling me it's less than what we pay right now?
Yeah, there's an annual fee to all of it. We pay annually for School Messenger. We pay annually for Gabbar Communications. So it's a recurring charge.
Okay, so weighed against that, it's going to save us a little bit or it's going to cost us more?
A couple of hundred bucks. Couple of hundred bucks.
Okay, so we're in the same...
Yeah, we're consolidating into just one.
It's not going to cost us more money, correct?
No, 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 no. And we're consolidating.
Okay, there's no further discussion? All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Science and Mrs. Young. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item thirty-one, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Area Health Education Center of the Mid Rio Grande Border Area Health Education Center and Rio Grande City Gruya ISD.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items thirty-one through thirty-four. Is there a second to that motion?
Second the motion.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on any of those items? There being none, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirty-five, consider and take possible action on proposal for civil engineering services from CLH Engineering Incorporated for the Rio Grande City High School Swimming Pool and Wrestling Complex.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-five and thirty-six as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve item thirty-five and thirty-six. Is there a second?
Include thirty-seven too, Mr. President.
And thirty-seven. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
There's a second by Mr. Peña. Is there any discussion required on any of those items?
Uh, just thirty, I'm sorry, let me see. I think it's thirty, the pool?
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead, proceed with discussion. Mr. Peña believes Mr. Lopez presenting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent. Basically, we are at the point here with the two swimming pools slash wrestling facilities at both high schools. We're at the point now where we are looking for the approval for CLH Engineering. And the item here that is coming up on MEG Engineering to do their two studies that they need to do with the soil testing and the boring. So that's basically where we're at, at this point with that project.
Just want to clarify, so it's for the bond situation with the, we're combining the facilities, right?
Yes, and we're doing that because we have, we have five million per pool, and we have one million per wrestling. So the reason we're looking to combine is just to save, you know, trying to use some of the same walls, same locker rooms, same restrooms, just trying to get more for our money.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, did we find a location for the swimming pool here in Rio Grande?
Yes, good question, Mr. Velazquez. We, we actually, when, when we were first starting here with Rio Grande, again, we were trying to save as much money as we can, as we could. So I know we kind of met with the principal. We met with the athletic director, of course, along with Mr. Peña and his team. And we were originally trying to find an area that already had an existing wall and possibly restrooms. We got away from that, and we went to an area where it was really everyone's first option. When I say everyone, our high school principal, our athletic director, and it's going to be right behind the bleachers where our football stadium is. So actually, it's right here next to us. We're behind the bleachers and right past the parking lot. It's a very flat surface, a very spacious area that we have there. So that will be the location here. And of course, we know where the location in Gruya High School is at already.
And, Mr. Peña, we're going to use our transportation department to bring the elementary kids, the middle school kids, over?
Yes, sir. Once the swimming complexes are complete, part of our plan is to include, you know, the lower grades to make sure that we start teaching swimming to them as well. It will not be only used by the high schools, but also by elementaries and other schools in the district.
Well, I'll just say one thing, that I always say swimming is a life lesson. It can save your life. I think everybody needs to learn how to swim. And there's probably a bunch of us that don't know how, but it's very important.
Mr. Velazquez, and along those lines, I know we're already looking at the pool that was started there at the fort. That's something that, you know, in meeting with a couple of Board members, meeting with Mr. Peña, we've had two architects already that, you know, went and gave us a, you know, a free, a free evaluation, free opinion, you know, and they both felt that we, we are at a point where it's better just to finish it off.[1457.88]